Ready? I'd like to call the meeting to order. Any items from the public?
If not, this morning we are most truly blessed to have Judge Redding with us to do a dedication for a service animal that he so chooses to bring to the court system. And we are oh so grateful that, you know, he thinks about others in their time of need. So Judge, it's all yours.
Tyler, one of the agendas.
You want to hear Judge? There you go.
Morning, as Commissioner said, I'm Steve Redding. I'm a circuit court judge here in Berkeley County. And I appreciate the Commission allowing us the opportunity to have this ceremony this morning. I'm going to go into a little bit of detail about this project and how we got from this as an idea to becoming a reality for us and kind of the bigger picture that we have. But before we do that, a lot of churches I've been to in the past have dedications. I've had my motorcycle dedicated a couple of times. And I've seen churches that do dedications for cats, particularly dogs. So we thought it would be appropriate, given Ernie Reed's faith, that we dedicate Rea to his service. And I have asked Robert Derby, a friend from church, to come up and just do the dedication, the blessing over Rea. If we could have Rea come on in with Harry and Hannah, I'd appreciate it. And then talk just a minute about the process and journey of recovery and perhaps how a well-trained dog can play a big role in providing comfort to folks who are going through the juvenile justice system, particularly children, whether they're dealing with family members that are struggling with substance abuse or children in the juvenile delinquency arena that may be suffering from substance abuse problems themselves. Have Harry and Hannah coming in now along with Rea. Come on, Ray. That's a girl. Come on. Rob, I'll turn it over to you, sir. Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Bob Derby. Pleasure to be here, y'all.
You're dressed for the occasion, too.
Good to see you, Steve.
Yeah, good to see you.
If I had known you all dressed this way, I would have come similar. Good to see the color. Thank you, Judge. Appreciate being here. So I'm just going to do a brief dedication to Rea to enter into the blessings that we all know that our Lord Jesus Christ has given to us and to be able to guide her in that spirit as she moves forward in her mission. And then I'll talk just very briefly about recovery. Rea, will you come here, baby?
We have orders. I'll come down.
Lord, we just want to take a moment and want to thank you for everything that you've done today, to be able to give us the blessing of Rea. We know, Lord, that she is going to do wonderful things to be able to help the children of this community in dealing with all things recovery, whether those children are being affected by their parents or their other siblings who are struggling with disease, with addiction, with alcoholism, or also to be with those who are in recovery themselves. And, Lord, we know that this dog, Rea, is going to be special. She's going to touch people in ways, Lord, that we know you want her to touch her and that we ask for your blessings over her today, tomorrow, and all the days forward. We ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
So let me share just a little bit about recovery. Of course, Steve's going to chuckle a little bit because part of what he used to do in his work here at the Berkeley County facilities to help the gyms at Berkeley 2000, et cetera, plays a large role in my story. So if I sound funny, it's because I'm from Boston. But I lived here for 20 years and I call Martinsburg home. But as a young kid growing up in the late 60s and the 70s, I was one of those kids who watched as alcoholism ripped through my family. And I didn't know it as a kid, but what I did was I observed it. And what kids do unfortunately is what they see is what they do. And it brought me into a world of addiction in both alcohol and drugs. I had been a little sports fanatic as a young man. I was one of those kids who would listen to the radio and go outside and play basketball and pretend that I was the athletes that the announcers were talking about. And I absolutely loved sports. And the problem was that drugs and alcohol took that away at an early age of 12 and 13 years old. And it continued that way for the next 25 years of my life. And it pretty much took everything I had, right down to a marriage and a house and everything else. The recovery part of it is that there is hope and that there's hope through some of the programs and recovery programs. There's hope through fellowship and there's hope through Jesus Christ our Lord. Had it not been for the recovery programs around here, I would not be here today to be talking to you and sharing the story. One of the parts where it comes into where Steve will perhaps have a smile is I spent about 20 years as coaching kids in the Berkeley Rec Center. And that was one way that I was able to give back to kids because of everything that I took. I took from myself, I took from my coaches, I took from my parents, I took from my teammates because drugs and alcohol were more important to me than actually playing the sport that I loved. So Steve, thank you for being able to have that opportunity to be able to do that. And it's a wonderful thing that they do and I continue to help out today in the community. Rea is going to play such an important role when we think about the effect that dogs have on children and families. We've all been around pets and we've seen the magical effect that they have on us. Even right here, she's walking around, she's touching people, she's bringing smiles to their faces. And I know that Rea's mission is far beyond what she even knows right now. She's going to be able to help that one child who won't have to grow up like I did in an area where I felt so insecure, so unfit, so lacking, if you will, the understanding and compassion that I truly needed at that time when I was growing up. So those are just some brief comments. Steve, thank you very much for asking me to come down. Steve texted me last night and said, hey, can you get here and eat in the morning? I'm like, yeah, sure. Anything, right? Anything. Anytime that I can help out and I can be able to serve is really what I do today. So thank you all for listening. Thank you all for coming. God bless you all. You have a beautiful day. Thank you.
In fairness to me, I had three other pastors lined up and they all had emergencies, as pastors often do, and Rob was the next to last person I contacted for the first time last night late. Yeah, I appreciate you being here, brother. I want to recognize the stakeholders in this project. And I want to start with a woman who's very special to me. She has been involved with children in various capacities her entire adult life. And she really is, I think, probably the primary instrument that the Supreme Court in West Virginia utilizes to make sure that our children are taken care of. Her name is Cindy Largent Hill. She's the Director of the Division of Juvenile Services with the West Virginia Supreme Court. And she and I have enjoyed being colleagues and now friends over the course of many years. I want to give Cindy just an opportunity to, excuse me, to address everybody. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. I am very honored to be here today and to be a small part of this wonderful and exciting opportunity for children. When Judge Redding approached me with the idea of a comfort dog and shared the research with me, I couldn't offer my support quick enough. I was especially happy that the first ever comfort dog in West Virginia was going to be right here in the Eastern Panhandle. While my job responsibilities take me all over the state, the Eastern Panhandle, Morgan County, sorry, but the Eastern Panhandle is my home. So I just was just super excited that this is where this program is going to start. As the judge mentioned, I am the Director of the Children's Division within the Supreme Court, and we have multiple responsibilities within my division, but all of those encompass those children who find themselves in the courtroom. We look at abuse and neglect and juvenile justice and a variety of things, and we learn about that system by talking to the judges, observing court, talking to the attorneys, anyone who might be involved in that court system for children. You know, the reasons that children are in court is due to unpleasant, sad, heartbreaking situations. And for these children, the court process is not comfortable. It's scary. They hear words they don't understand that make no sense. There are these very professional-looking people that stare at them, lots of grownups all around them, no other children. And I'm sure you would agree that court proceedings are stressful for us as adults. Can you imagine how a child must feel, especially a vulnerable, traumatized child? Anything that we can do as stakeholders in the complex child welfare system to lessen that fear and that stress for these vulnerable children is our responsibility and it's our duty. So as I mentioned, when Judge Redding approached me and said, what do you think about a comfort dog, I couldn't say yes quick enough. And I want to thank you all here in Berkeley County for supporting this program, for welcoming Rea into your court community and the courthouse. Because of your willingness, all of you here today, to think outside the box and do something a bit non-traditional, children in our area will now have a furry friend to help with the stress and trauma during court proceedings. I have no doubt that Rea will easily live up to her name and will give those around her what her namesake gave all of us, a smile and a very warm feeling in our heart. I was blessed to know Ernie and I considered him a friend. His contagious smile and his genuine concern and care for others brightened every workday that I saw him, and I know it did for all of you in here. And I know in my heart that's exactly what Rea is going to do for the children that she's with. She will make them feel cared about, a bit calmer, and definitely comforted. I'm excited to watch and hear about Rea's successes and to watch this opportunity unfold. It's really my hope that Rea is just the first of many comfort dogs around the state. Thank you again for embracing this program and project, and thank you for letting me be here today.
I think it's pretty evident why we all feel blessed to have Cindy as part of our team, trying to help the children, not only in Berkeley, Morgan, and Jefferson County, but throughout the state. Cindy, thank you so much. And I was a little bit shocked that you had nice prepared notes, given that I called you last night at 10 o'clock and asked you to be here. She was on the list months ago, but we had lots of juvenile hearings, so thank you again. Want to speak briefly about the breeder. The agenda has a mistake on it. It says trainer and then Prep Your Puppy Training Academy. The trainer should have been breeder, but the breeder, interestingly enough, we had done a lot of research early on. And we were looking first for what type of dog would be best for this kind of program and quickly settled on the Golden Doodle for a lot of reasons, including temperament and being non-shedding and hypoallergenic. And then we started researching Golden Doodle breeders. And low and behold, one of the preeminent breeders in the country in our backyard in Morgan County, and that's Fox Creek Farm. And Amy Athie and Kelsey Painter-Athie are the owner and manager of Fox Creek Farm. They were kind enough to meet with me and then later with Cindy and myself and ultimately with my wife, Kristy, who's here somewhere, and one of my grandchildren. And that was kind of the last bit of selling their program on us was seeing my granddaughter's reaction to Rea. They not only breed very responsibly and ethically, they also, Rea, now behave yourself. They also are the breeder responsible for creating the miniature Golden Doodle breed that's all over the world now. And they have dogs that have been sold to, two to the Biden family, Robert De Niro, a lot of folks in Hollywood, a lot of folks in the media. They're extraordinarily well-known. And I just am really impressed with their breeding practices. They do not allow any of their dogs to be bred outside of their program. If you buy one of their dogs, you have to agree to have it spayed or neutered, or you have to return the dog. If you get caught breeding the dog outside of the contractual obligation, then the financial penalties are pretty staggering. And that's all a part of a good ethical program. So I did want to point out that they have been a tremendous stakeholder. They have agreed to assist us with providing additional puppies in the future if other counties desire to do this. And we're going to soon present this to the other judges and folks around the state. Want to talk about the trainer. We asked Fox Creek Farm, after we developed some trust with them, who they recommended, and they recommended Prep Your Puppy Training Academy. So we talked to a couple of different trainers and one had a kind of a subspecialty in therapy dogs and particularly dogs dealing with children. Her name is Samantha St. Clair, goes by the name of Sam. She's up in Pennsylvania, kind of between Baltimore and Philadelphia. And she had Rea for 10 weeks. And it's funny to talk to Sam because she said, like, the second night, she was like, nine weeks and five days to go, how am I going to get there? Rea was not the Rea you see today. She had Zumies 24/7. As you can see, she doesn't have, there's no strangers to Rea. She loves everybody. If she's in a courtroom, it doesn't matter. It's a seven-year-old that's having to testify or defendant in a murder case. She wants to lick them and play with them and talk to them. And she's really been a tremendous gift. And when I met Sam to pick up Rea, I had two of my grandchildren with me, just because I knew that would make the ride back easier. But Samantha was crying because she had seen such a change in Rea that she was sorry to see her go. And now that we've had her for a couple of months, we understand that. I don't know what I'm going to do if, well, she's going to outlive me, I think. I understand that that bond now develops very quickly, particularly with her. So we wanted to give some recognition to Samantha, and she wants to continue working with this program if anyone else around the state desires to do this. I did want to point out and thank Judge McLaughlin for being here today. Debbie, thank you. I appreciate it. Debbie is one of my colleagues, and she presides in Berkeley and Morgan. And I think she knows that Rea would be available to her anytime she needs Rea. And Rea certainly can travel to Morgan County just as well as anyone else can. So I appreciate you being here and supporting this. Want to just take a minute to acknowledge and give recognition to our veterinarian. I want to just take a minute to acknowledge and give recognition to our veterinarian, Dr. Tori Chamblin. Tori is here with us, and her technician Tiffany is here with us. I did a little bit of research, and this seemed to be a good fit for us and for this program, not to mention that because of a circle of friends that are a generation apart, but are friends. One of who is a doctor and his wife, or they have a child, and that child is, and his child and his wife are good friends of Tori and Tori's husband. So we were at a Kentucky Derby party at this last Kentucky Derby, and I said, "Tori", I said, "I got this really cool project. I just think you'd really be excited about it." Not even thinking about her as being the person to provide care for Rea, and she lit up immediately and said, "We would like to take care of Rea and help out with her." You know, there's a lot of vets in the area, but I, because I know what kind of Tori's about and a little bit about her dedication to this community, I thought that she would probably be appropriate, and it's turned out that way. In fact, I don't know why she hasn't blocked me yet, because having Rea for the last couple of months reminds me of bringing my first child home from the hospital, Jonathan. You just, why did they trust me with this? I put the diaper on backwards. You get squirt when you're trying to change the diaper and just don't know when to feed them, when to burp them, how to hold them. Every time they hiccup, you have to call the doctor, you have to text the doctor. I have bombarded her with texts. "Tori, Rea's eyes rolled back when she fell asleep. Is she having a stroke?" "No, she's not having a stroke. Settle down." "Tori, she didn't go to the bathroom after breakfast this morning." "It's fine. She'll probably go after lunch, Steve." "Tori, you've been great." Man, really, really appreciate you. Tiffany, you've been gentle and sweet with Rea, and we have a groomer that we use at their facility, and her name is Remington. She couldn't be here today, but she was groomed yesterday just for this auspicious occasion, and everybody in there was really loving and sweet and fell in love with Rea. So I want to give Dr. Tori just a second to say hello and introduce herself to everybody and just kind of explain a little bit about what she does in the community to assist the community and our children. So Tori, I'll give just a second.
Good morning. I know that this has certainly pulled on my heartstrings this morning, so I think that there's probably not been a dry eye in this room, but this is a huge part of why I wanted to go to vet school. Not only do I love animals, but I am also a people person. And if you read my bio on our Shenandoah Veterinary Hospital website, that is what I talk about. I love being able to work with everyone in the community, and I truly feel that the human-animal bond is so real. These pets can read us, they feed off of us, and the fact that I can help with one that's going to be helping children, it just is an example of the good that we're able to do. There's a lot of bad in the world, especially right now, and to be able to do something like this, especially in a career that we unfortunately see some sad moments, and so this is really just a cherry on top for us. I also just love that not only was I wanting to help, but everyone at Shenandoah and at the Paw Spa was just, when we started talking about this, they lit up and everyone was wanting to give their time and meet Rea. So it's been an honor, and thank you for trusting us and to give her care. If you all ever need anything, and you don't have to bother me, and we can talk through puppy dreams and everything, so, but thank you all, and thank you for trusting us with her care.
I think that was my questions yesterday, this morning? I don't know, recently, very recently. I'm mixing up some, a couple of days here, but she's, in fact, she was, I had Jamie, one of the magistrate assistants, watch her for a week while we were at the beach very recently, and he said, "I had a talk with Rea because she had a nightmare, and she'll actually start jerking and flailing and whining or whimpering." And she said, when she woke up and I talked to her, she said that she was sad she had to go back with the judge and wanted to stay with Jamie and the two children. So Rea and I had a talk, and it was just a misunderstanding. Rea said, "That was rough." Really, really do appreciate Dr. Tori and the folks at Shenandoah for giving her really good care. Do want to take a moment to thank the Berkeley County Administrator, Gary Wine, and the mission. I apologize on being, back to you. I came to you guys with this vision, it's probably been a year ago, maybe, certainly close to a year. Knew that the right way to do this was to get it on the agenda for a public hearing and to make a proposal, and you heard me out and listened intently, and I recall very vividly this body making a motion, was seconded, and then I think one of you gentlemen thirded the motion, which made me feel like we really had buy-in from the county on this. You guys know that I appreciate that. Want to take just a brief moment to thank my wife, Kristy, again, who's here today. Kristy had the unfortunate experience as a child of being attacked by a dog, and she's been fearful of dogs ever since, and I'm not sure I fully respected that until I floated this crazy idea. And if I searched her phone, I'm pretty convinced that I would have seen calls to Kristi Jinnell and Mark Sutton and all the good divorce lawyers, because, and all you guys in the room, I know you know the look. It's, they kind of throw some shade at you, and then they cut their eyes to the door like, you know, you've got a choice. You get the dog or you get the door. So we talked about it and battled about it a little bit, and I was kind of sneaky and had other people approach her and say, "Oh, it's such a great idea you and Steve have." And like, it was her idea, and the really funny thing is that we have this beautiful crate next to the bed, and all of her blankets and toys are in the crate, and Rea's in the bed next to Kristy's, so it's worked out pretty well. In fact, last week, I was unpacking my lunch. Kristy's a very traditional wife, and she insists on packing me a lunch every day, and I was putting it in the refrigerators, I usually do when I get into the courthouse in the morning, and I saw another Tupperware container on the bottom of the bag, and it had a lunch for Rea, even though I have kibble at the courthouse for her, and it had a note that said, "Dearest Rea, I hope you enjoy your lunch. Love, Mom." I still have that note. I think Rea and I have pulled her over to the bright side, so Kristy, thank you. I very much appreciate that. And I hope that she gets to have the opportunity to see the difference that Rea is already making, and I've been telling her some of the stories, but she's working very well with the children already. My, a couple of my bail, maybe all of my security teams here today, and they're in the courthouse seeing it, and she's very much like this. She's calm once she gets settled down and is very attentive to the children and really attuned to their moods, and you can kind of see her absorbing their stress and their sadness. And I saw a little bit of her mood yesterday. I picked her up from the groomer, and you know, talk about throwing shade. That dog was so mad at me for putting her through that. She got in the car and she stared straight ahead out the window. She is usually in my lap in the car, and I tried to talk to her. She didn't want to talk, and I tried to pet her, and it reminded me, if you've seen the movie Deliverance, when the dueling banjos is finished, and he tries to shake the kid's hand with the banjo, and the kid goes, went right out the passenger side window. Got home last night, we were getting ready for bed. Well, first she went in the crate, and she just laid there when I was the only one home with her and would not interact with me, and then when Kristy got home, she was jumping up and down on her and in the bed and snuggling, and I came up and tried to snuggle, and she jumped on the other side, and Kristy just looked at me and said, "No, not yet." So as battles go with women in my life, I was trying to figure out which bedroom I was going to be in for the next two weeks, but they let me stay with them. All right, the really important part of today for me is the next portion, and that's recognizing the family of Rea's namesake, Ernie Sunshine Reed. Ernie would stand watch at the front door of the courthouse every day. Ernie is, was Judge Cohie's bailiff, so he would be in her courtroom, but as often as he could, he would be at the front door. And his role, to him, was to make people at ease and to give them a smile and say, "Hello, sunshine." Everybody that came in that door, not flirtatious, not gratuitous, just a sincere, friendly, "Hello, sunshine." I was with Ernie on Tuesday, the 20th, 30th of January, and Ernie was not feeling well and told me he wasn't feeling well. We were riding up the elevator to attend a training with CPS workers in Judge Cohie's courtroom, and I said, "Ernie, if you're having pain, you need to go to the doctor." And he said, "Oh, it's okay, Judge. I've got an appointment Thursday." And sadly, on the 31st of January, on a Wednesday, we got news early in the morning that we and the Reed family had lost Ernie. I have never seen a building more somber and devastated, and I can apologize to my bailiffs who like to see that they're struggling with this now, and to the Reeds, I apologize. But just to let you know the kind of man Ernie was, there was just absolute devastation, and it still is heavy on everybody's hearts at the courthouse. Ernie's life was a life of service. Ernie enlisted in the United States Air Force in, I want to say, 1992, 1991, and I believe he retired, was it April 23rd, 2014? Okay, I've got dates wrong. But in any event, he was, for a large part of his career, at the Air Guard here in Martinsburg, and he was a technical sergeant, and he received a meritorious service award amongst many other awards he has received that recognized him for outstanding service to the United States as an Assistant Flight Sergeant, 167th Security Forces Squadron. From March 18 of 92 to April 23 of 14, Sergeant Reed's professional skills and dedication directly impacted the overall successful integrated defense mission, the 167th Airlift Wing and 167th Security Forces Squadron. Ernie mobilized for Operation Enduring Freedom in deployment in support of Operation Iraqi Freedom and was responsible for supervising the defense of the airbase. He served as an Emergency Communications Center Controller and Unit Deployment Manager for two operational readiness exercises and inspections and deployments. He flawlessly maintained over $1 million worth of deployable assets and provided oversight of this program. Sergeant Reed served as the Assistant Flight Sergeant for the full-time security manning of the wing. He's responsible for providing resource protection of C-5 aircraft and equipment assigned to the wing, having a cumulative value of $1,672 million in facility protection valuing $280 million without loss or damage. His job knowledge and skills have attributed to his flawless mission accomplishments. The seniorly distinctive accomplishments of Sergeant Reed culminated distinguished career in the service of this country and reflect great credit upon himself, the Air Guard, and the United States Air Force. After leaving the Air Force, we are fortunate that Ernie came to work at the courthouse as a bailiff. He worked his way up and was a lieutenant on behalf of our court martial, Mike Lang. And Mike, I appreciate you being here today. And as I said, he just was such an integral part of the courthouse. But what I appreciated most about Ernie, because of the work that I do, is that he was so invested in the children, and anytime a child would come in the courthouse, he would have a stuffed animal for them, a smile, would talk to them. If it was a child that was coming in to do a courtroom prep for testimony, he would be with them in the courtroom and would provide comfort to them and encourage them and let them know that everything would be okay. He and I had a lot of interesting discussions. We both are avid hunters, and we would trade hunting stories, and each one would get more grandiose. It was the hunter's version of fish stories, except I lied, and Ernie, I'm pretty sure was telling the truth, because as they say nowadays, he had receipts. He had pictures. And in fairness to me, I hunt in Wardensville, which I generally don't even try to harvest the deer. I just like to get out in nature because they're really very small, and Ernie went to some really interesting, neat places to hunt. We also talked about his love for Nebraska University, where he graduated, and some of the shenanigans that went on there. And let me ask you this, since we're talking about animals, does anybody know a cat by the name of Daniel Lawrence Whitney? I think some of my bailiffs might. Fun fact, Mr. Whitney was a college roommate of Ernie's at Nebraska, and they used to joke around a lot. I think Ernie was the funnier of the two, but Mr. Whitney was pretty funny himself, I think. And Ernie would always respond to Mr. Whitney's crazy ideas by telling him to get her done. Ironically, Mr. Whitney would later take on a stage name, Larry the Cable Guy. I don't know if you guys have ever heard of him or not, but Ernie's best friend in college was Larry the Cable Guy. Terry, Larry owes you a fortune in royalties. Want to introduce Ernie's family we have here. Terry Reed, who I've gotten to know unfortunately well recently, and his daughter Hannah. Hannah, we're so happy that you guys were willing to participate in this service. I know it's incredibly difficult for you guys. Hannah, it breaks in my heart to see how close you are, but I see cries of tear, tears of pride in you, and those are well-deserved. You have a lot of reasons to be proud of your dad. He was a wonderful man. And I think we have Candace, the oldest daughter. She's appearing by FaceTime right now, virtually. So Candace, hello. We're sorry we couldn't be here. Everybody in this room has love for you guys, and we're here for you anytime you need us. Just let us know. I want to give Terry an opportunity, if she would like, and you don't have to, Terry. You'll try? Okay. We discussed this, and that's, you don't have to, and if you feel you need to stop, you let me know, and we'll stop. But I want to turn it over to Terry for just a moment.
So I'm going to try this, but with all these guys back in the back of the room, I'm not sure how well I'm going to be doing this. When the idea of Rea was first presented to us, our family, after Ernie's passing, even though we were in great sorrow, we knew that Rea's presence here in Berkeley County was going to be an outstanding asset to the county, to the children, and everyone in this building that is here on a regular basis, whether, you know, you're here for a hearing or you're here working on a daily basis. And the things that Ernie loved most were children, being able to work with them, and pets, and of course, his family and his coworkers and things as well. But when Ernie was in the Air Force and as he transitioned to Berkeley County, he worked with children on a regular basis. He coached youth football. He also coached youth volleyball at the rec center. And being able to incorporate a comfort pet or a comfort animal here in this building, he would have been thrilled. He would have been 100% and another 100% on board with this program. We were super excited to hear what you guys came up with for her name, Rea Sunshine. As any of you knew, like the judge just said a little bit ago, Ernie would greet everybody with the words, "Hello, sunshine." Didn't matter if he knew you a lifetime or if he'd just met you. That was always something that he would always say, and we think it's very fitting that Rea would be able to say that in her own way every day in the courtroom. We've heard some of the stories. We've heard some of the stories about Rea's training and Judge was saying, you know, Rea was being a pup. Well, for those of us who knew Ernie for a very long period of time, he wasn't really fond of being in school either. But once he left that facility and started his career, his multiple careers, he shined in anything he did, whether it was volunteer work or here or in the Air Force. And we know as a family and as a family here that Rea is going to do the same thing. So we thank you guys for allowing us to be part of Rea's presentation here to the county. And I thank all of you for including us and we just look forward to seeing all the great things that Rea is going to do.
Just to close, I want to again thank everybody for being here, particularly the brothers of Ernie that are here from the security staff. I know Ernie's looking down on us today, smiling and proud of himself and of all of I think we're all going to see Ernie again at some point and that's going to be a wonderful reunion. Until then, I think Ernie would look down on us and say, all right, guys, get back to work, get her done. That's what we're going to do. We're going to do that in Ernie's memory. I thank everybody for being here today. I appreciate you guys. This is incredible program. If you aren't aware, there is a Facebook page that Rea set up. It's Rea Sunshine page. And we take pictures and post videos just to keep the community and the folks that have been involved in this program up to date on what she's doing and how she's progressing, which has been beyond my expectations at this point. And I thank you all for being here again. And we'll go ahead at this point and adjourn. And I wish you all well. Thank you. Mr. President, picture. Thank you. We're going to take a quick break and get some pictures if that's okay. So we're going to take.
We're back in session. I kind of got ahead of myself, but I need a motion to approve the agenda. We have one modification to remove the Tony Petrucci from the county clerk's office.
No, just of his agenda.
We're doing that again?
Where'd he go? I'm still be at your side.
Motion to approve amended agenda for July 25th, 2024.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed, motion carries. And then we just went through the Judge Redding and Ray of the Sunshine. What a beautiful ceremony that was in honor of Ernie and his family. He is missed. Let's see, we have purchase order log. Have Tracy here. She, any questions for Tracy? No internal budget revisions. We have a couple of changes in status. New hire recommendation received from the Honorable Shelley Shopper. Circuit Clerk for Christine Dunn as a deputy clerk with the annual salary of $39,500. That's effective August the 5th of 2024. New hire recommendation received from Tim Zaya, Community Corrections Director, for the following, effective August the 12th, 2024. Okay, so Shauna Hernandez as a drug screening tech with the annual salary of $39,008.12. Logan Beard with, as a DRC case manager with the annual salary of $50,676, and that's effective August the 12th. Have a letter of resignation received from the Circuit Clerk's Office from Connor Spencer, effective August the 2nd, 2024. And we have a letter of resignation received from the Prosecuting Attorney's Office from Kaylee Williams, and that's effective August the 2nd, 2024. We have approval of the amendments. Commissioner Barnhart and Commissioner Boyd were not present, so we pulled those out. Can I get a motion to approve?
We'll move.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed, motion carries. And two abstentions?
Yes.
All right. As Penny so quickly reminded me on the World Wide Web last Thursday to uh
On her vacation.
Yeah, on her vacation, motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda for July 25th, 2024.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Penny. And now we have the Honorable Larry Hess with 23 personal tax exonerations for office error and a total value of $6,254.23.
He's valid.
Okay, do you have any questions? Anybody have any questions on those?
No, sir.
All righty, after I've already said it, can I have a motion to approve the personal tax exonerations due to office error?
So move.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed, motion carries. I'll let you do the 21 real estate.
Thank you. That was easy.
Yeah.
Okay, we do have 21 real estate office error. We had to correct for the reasons that's listed there. And the total, okay. Total of those, 21 would be $11,574.10.
Okay. All right, I have a motion for the 21 real estate tax exonerations for office error.
So move.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, what was the 43692 from the Burke County Council?
That was down by the Baltimore Street. Okay, so you have two parcels down. One in the back, this is three something acres. We had it listed as being taxable, and it should have been non-taxable. You guys have been getting a bill on it for a couple of years, I think, but
Do we get a refund?
We never paid it.
We never paid it.
Better go up for auction.
It's gone for now and next year, so it's all, it's back to being exempt.
I do have a question. A friend of mine, when they sent their personal property tax report in, they forgot to add a vehicle, and they asked me if I could give you the information. Do they have to add it, or can I give the information and they add it? Or what would you rather have?
Well, if you can give me the map and parcel number or name, so I could
Personal.
Personal.
Vehicle, no. No, this is what they report their cars on.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
As long as we do it before October 1st, because it will be late after October 1st, so if I can get the information, we can make a change.
Okay, they mailed it in with their cars on it, so I just, they just needed to add a car to it.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Just let me know.
I'll be over, I've got mine to do too.
Sure.
All right, sir, thank you.
Yep.
Anything else for the assessor?
Good.
All righty.
You're going to ask consolidation.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, application for consolidation of property. Sorry about that.
We do have
We didn't vote on that, did we?
Yeah, we did. Oh, for the consolidation of property?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, we did not.
Do I have a motion to approve the consolid-
No, we did that.
How many actually did you say, all in favor?
All in favor? Say aye. Like, sign opposed?
There you go.
There you go, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Barnhart, for keeping me straight this morning.
It's been a job.
Sergeant in arms, yep.
I do have one application for consolidation for Charles Atkins. Had two parcels in the Hedgesville District in map 32, parcel 7.3 and 7.1. We just put them together so they can get one tax bill. So we need to get your approval on that one.
All righty, can I have a motion to approve the consolidation of property?
Uh huh.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
All right, sir, thank you so much. Board of meeting reports. Mr. Boyd?
Okay, had a few meetings. Had a meeting down at the Roundhouse with the State Fire Marshals the other day. That went well. All the pool stations and everything were in. They wanted a couple of things added. Since we have a system that is natural gas for the heat, they want a CO2 detectors added to the system, and they wanted the fire extinguishers moved by the doors. Besides that, everything else is pretty much good to go, and I believe we will get use, approval for the use and occupancy of the second floor for 299 occupancy. As soon as the inspections for elevators are finished, and we get the CO2 detectors up.
Very good.
So now that the elevator project is pretty much finished, except for final inspections, we're about to be able to use that upstairs.
What'd you say, the 299?
299, yeah.
That seems low.
Well, the engineering of the building without changing the, the posts that hold the floor up, from cast iron to steel, we, structural integrity, well, the engineers will only, or architects or engineers will only give us a 299 rating, or 300 rating. Technically, with the two doors, we could have another 100 people, but until we would do some of that rating, or put columns downstairs as additional. I mean, if you look at those beams, I don't know how they could break, honestly, but I'm not an engineer, you know, so that's where we're at. If we, if we would switch out the, like I said, the
Cast.
Cast iron for steel, then
I say, because area, area square feet wise, you'd have more than enough room there.
Oh, you could have 1,400 people there with square footage, yeah.
How many?
1,400. If we would structurally make it more sound, yeah. But, so that was good news. They took down the zero occupancy that had previously been put in place, and told us just to get those couple of things finished, and they would come back. They're actually going to meet with the, with the people to give them exactly where to put what, so we're good to go. That should be coming up soon. They're in an email thread together. I had the CVB meeting yesterday. It went well. They were over budget this year due to the new grant structure that they put in. They did, had not, I guess, accounted for that when they did last year's budget, so they went over their budget by a good bit this year. But they still have money. They have cut off all seat grants, remainder of next year. Those are the big ones, the $30,000 grants. They've already given out, I believe, three or four of those, so those are finished for the year. And they do still have, still going to continue to do the small grants, but the big ones are finished for the year for this coming fiscal year. And the budget, or the, I guess, account balance is somewhere like 780 something thousand, I think, where it had been carrying around nine. Those big grants really ate into some funds. And occupancy is down a little bit, so their funds are down a little bit. Not, not a lot. Airbnb's are down more than the hotels. Hotels are only down like 1% this month. But overall in the year, I think they're down like 4% or something like that. But we have a few new hotels, and we're doing better than other parts of the state as for hotels. We have a lot of contractors and different people staying in hotels right now and things, so.
And we've got a couple more hotels planned.
Yeah, and the new ones went up, but they're, you know, I think the hotels are right now at like 62% or 63% last year. They were like 64.
Occupancy.
Yeah. So, but with new hotels, I would, in a way, I think that still is a higher occupancy, but the Airbnb's are down, right, this time of the year, anyway. Not as many people seem to be traveling to this area. Overall, across the state, though, they said it's been consensus across the state this year. There's a large film coming to Jefferson County. We're hoping that they film some here in Berkeley County, a $4 million film coming, has to do with Revolutionary War period. And there's a couple other people been doing some, doing some things. The Ambassador Program that they teamed up with Main Street is doing well. They're doing walks on the Frog Hollow Trail. They're doing pup walks, and then finishing up at different restaurants with outdoor seating, and dogs get water, and people have drinks, and there's just different things going on with that program that, that seem to be doing well, so that's, that's going good. And, and that's pretty much what it is. They're going to travel to the AFMs again this year. This year, it's November 5th to the 10th.
Anything else?
That's all I got right now.
All right, Mr. Barnhart?
Thank you, Mr. President. We had a Warner Board meeting, but I was unable to attend because I had a conflict of interest. But Monday, I, I give the welcoming address for the Region 9 Development, all the region planning agencies gather at Charlestown Races for their annual meeting. And of course, I'll give the welcome presentation because I'm president of Region 9 Planning and Development. Can I get a free dinner?
Yeah. Bet on horses, where you're at?
I may stop, stop after the dinner.
Stop after the dinner, okay.
Put a dollar down.
Anything else?
That's it.
All right. Mr. Catlett?
The best thing about Berkeley County is its people. Would any of you agree?
Yep.
Absolutely. We lost two really, well, I don't want to say, we lost one really good Berkeley County, and Jim Rickert passed away.
Oh, he did?
Last, this past Saturday.
Oh, I didn't know.
His service is going to be on Monday, and the reception after his service is actually going to be at the barn in the poorhouse, which is really fitting. You know, the lake's named after Jim Rickert Lake. Jim served on the park board for 30 years, probably. He served on the hospital board, and, and his wife, she was an educator, teacher, for many years before she retired. And of course, they contributed a lot of funds and a lot of time to various things throughout Berkeley County. And he was quite a gentleman, 96 years old. When he turned 80, I was 55 years old, and he had more energy than I did at 80 than I had at 55. But, but he's going to be really missed, and I just wanted to mention that today. And also, another Berkeley County who is still living and is going to be 100 years old is Gene Burkhardt. Bobby Burkhardt's wife is turning 100 years old. And of course, Bobby was a county commissioner for many, many years, a county clerk, I think, at one.
Started off there, yeah.
Yeah, as a clerk, and, but of course, you all know the Burkhardt family and what they meant to Berkeley County. And so Gene will be 100 years old, and they're celebrating her birthday this Saturday, so very good. As far as meetings go, I did have a senior service meeting yesterday, and one of the things at the fundraising committee that Becky Linton's heading up is they're going to start, it's going to be on September 19th, and I have a copy for each of you, is the, they're going to have, this will be the inaugural Senior Hero Dinner, and they're going to have a dinner each year now as a fundraiser. The goal for this first year is to try to raise $10,000, and they've already sold over $3,000 in sponsorships for the dinner. So I have copies for each other, there's two, one of each to take if you would like to attend the dinner, or if you'd like to even sponsor. There's different levels of sponsorship that would be appreciated as a fundraiser for senior services. The other thing, while I was at the meeting yesterday, and I noticed in their notes, they were reviewing their evacuation plans and their, their plans if there's an emergency, how they handle it, and all those facilities have to have a plan. And I asked, do you have an AED in that facility? And they said, no, and that kind of surprised me. So I have an ambulance authority meeting tonight, and I'm going to talk to them about getting an AED, AED over there for the seniors. And they should have one, and hopefully they can maintain it for them. And it is a county building, correct, so we should have an AED over there, and we'll figure out who's going to pay for it. But the ambulance authority can get it obviously a lot cheaper than anybody else, so I'll talk to them tonight about that. I sent you all a copy of an email I just got this morning from David Workman. David is a commissioner in Hardy County. He's also elected from our eight county region as the executive board member for the CCA. And David's a wonderful person. If you haven't met him before, I know Eddie has met him several times, and he's a great guy. Apparently, this whole panhandle's been listed as a, as a drought relief, as a stage three status, which qualifies us which qualifies us for federal aid for farmers and stuff if we need it. So, so I'm going to try to see if I can get Matt or whomever to get the word out amongst the community that, of course, we first got to get the governor to announce that it's an emergency situation. But we're the only part of the state that's under the status of stage three. And then another brief note, I got contacted by the youth care and there's been a lot of improvements made to the big, what do they call it?
Arena?
Arena. I know the Henry's put in insulation there. So when people are going to be sitting in there in August now, instead of being 110 degrees in there, they've checked it on days when it's been 90 degrees and the temperature's been in the low 70s in there due to this insulation. It's unbelievable how it didn't affect its head. Then Roach Energy came through and put newer fans and better fan system in there. So improvements there. So they called and said, hey, we're going to mount these United States and West Virginia State flags up permanently in there because Berkeley County have a county flag. Gary got one for me. I'm taking it down this afternoon so they can put a Berkeley County flag in there as a permanent thing too for, for the arena. So that'll be, well, I think of the arena as being the outdoor place, but that's the indoor arena, I guess is what they call it. And I assume that we're going to be down there with the tent again, Penny, the plan?
They haven't, I haven't sent out paperwork yet, but I'm sure it'll come in any time.
Okay, yeah.
Like two weeks, isn't it?
Yeah, less than two weeks. It starts August the 3rd, I think.
Yeah, August 3rd.
Yeah. And then, I was away last week on vacation, but before I left, I did attend a town hall meeting down in Beddington Ruhr Town Club. I got a call and so I went down. Residents are really upset with the traffic situation on the mouth of the Pecking Road with the big trucks, the concrete trucks, the tractor trailers and all, and the traffic. So they had a meeting about it. I will say this, Christian Fisher was there and very transparent, addressed the crowd very well. And I was there just to offer support. And my take was is that, you know, I think that CMC's a really good partner for our community and it's better to be there to support him. And I know we've worked to get to the Sheriff's Department down there with signage and patrols down there to help with the situation. They are going to get this new road supposedly started. It goes out to Route 11 in the second week of August. It's supposed to start construction. I thought they were going to have to have it finished before they can use it, but they're actually just going to get it in and base it with shale and then scrabble it and start using it at that point for entrance and exit, to leave it brown. So hopefully by sometime in October, they'll be off of the road down there is the hope. So there was concern about in the future if other properties are sold by Shockies and they need to bring trucks in or they have to. But the way I understand it, the entrance road that they're building is on Shockies property and that will be the entrance and exit. Eventually, there's supposedly to be even a stoplight there on 11. So when they are in actual business, they'll be using it every day. And, but other companies that come in will have access to this road too, like our water district will have access to it.
Where's it coming in at?
Right there at 11, right by the water plant, you know, where the water treatment plant is there on 11. So I assume it'll be on the south side of the treatment plant.
It is.
So, so, you know, the crowd was, there was a lot of people there. So it's a real concern. And there were some people really upset, but I commend Christian very much on the way he handled the situation, very upfront, very transparent, I thought, and addressed the crowd very well. And so hopefully, you know, that road will get built sooner than later.
Thank you. Mr. Catlett, Sheriff's Office, as you mentioned, you know, will be getting their signage out there and doing some patrolling as well. And also, Department of Highways has been asked to go back out and reevaluate that. Mr. Cohen says that they had speed limit signs stolen. So they've got new signs out already. I was down a few days ago. And also, brown road is a concern, which I contacted DOH once again about additional signage that tractor trailers will not know that that road is not suitable because of the tunnel. So they said that they would reevaluate that as well, so.
The brown road situation is that the tractor and trailers don't use it, but the workers there on site are using it and drive fairly quick. There was a pretty serious accident there a few weeks back, but it was actually an engineer from CMC that was in the accident, not a resident, so. But of course, the concern is, is that when school starts up soon and the buses and all, there's a, there's a lot of concern. But hopefully, like I said, they'll get this road built sooner than later. And I know they're working on it and hopefully they'll get done, so.
Goguenard.
Yes, sir. My landmarks meeting was canceled on the 22nd, but we did have a construction meeting for the Dunn Building. You noticed this morning, the ramp is nearing completion. They'll be putting handrails up today and then floor covering will be, will be done. So hopefully we'll have that ramp by Tuesday for the public to be able to use. The old assessor space is really shaping up over here. That's, that's going to be the multi-use building or space. It's really nice. There's almost two sections to it. There's a section out front, kind of a seating area perhaps, but could also be a small meeting area as well. The old fiduciary space, it's, it's complete. It's going through its cleanup right now. It really looks nice. Day report, they're hanging and finishing drywall today. They cut their last window in, so any shebang after that, they'll have to carry up the steps.
In pieces?
In pieces. There will be a delay in the elevator, maybe as far as September or early October, we may get occupancy. But the elevators could be holding that project up a little bit. But they're moving along very well and no real, no real large hiccups.
Very good.
How soon you think will the assessor's, excuse me, Parks Office will be moving over? Do y'all have a feel on that yet?
The, the move for the county clerk probably will be mid-September. It's not relative to construction, it's relative to shelving that we're waiting to be delivered. And they're, they're slated to start that installation next week. So hopefully we can move the county clerk in September.
Anything else, sir?
No, sir.
That's it? Well, lucky me, I didn't have any meetings to report on. So with that being said, we have a couple, do we have any reappointments to any boards or bureaus?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Have a motion to appoint Mike?
Yeah, I missed that. Yeah, there's a few others, Mr. President.
Let me, I'll go through them here for you. Reappointment packet received from Mike McGinnis for the ambulance authority. His term expires July the 19th. So can I have a motion to reappoint him?
I'll make that motion, Jim. He serves on there and does well. He's our vice president of that authority and that we reappoint Mike McGinnis.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Right.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries. Reappointment packet for Greg Rowe for Stormwater District Board.
Yeah, I serve on that board as well and I would make that motion to reappoint Greg to Stormwater District.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed, motion carries. And a packet received from Christopher Jones for Parks and Rec.
Yes, sir. A motion to reappoint Chris Jones to Parks and Rec Board.
All righty. Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we got two of them. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed, motion carries. And we have reappointment packets received from the following. For the Criminal Justice Board, their terms expire August 31st, 2024. We have a Cora Rutherford, Mike Lang, Aaron Gatner, Harold Slaughter, Catherine Bradley. Okay, Penny, what's this?
Jamika.
Jamika.
Lyomir.
Lyomir. And Patrick Patton. Do I have a motion to reappoint those to the Criminal Justice Board?
Yes, sir, you do.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries. And we have a application received from Tori Barrett for the Development Authority and Planning Commission. Do we want to bring him in for an interview? Go ahead and bring him, go ahead and let him know. And let's see, Anthony DeLaGuetti, you're next up. Resolution for Conservation District Supervisor, motion to adopt.
Hey, so back in the primary election, there was a mistake on the ballot which you all ambassadors took care of, the ballot situation with two Conservation District Supervisors that were running for new terms, the ballot was wrong. But there was still one seat on there that was, where there was an appointment to fill the vacancy left by Floyd Cursey. Fred Johnson was appointed. And because it was more than two years and six months left on the term, it has to be filled by an election. Nobody actually ran for that in the primary. And because this is a nonpartisan race, the statute says that it can be the next primary or gen, if not then, then the next general election. So in talking with the Secretary of State's office, it should be on the general election ballot because there aren't dates for filing for the general election because it's usually nominees from parties, they're usually partisan elections. And the county commission has to, one, set a special election, and two, set dates for filing. These are almost always non-contested. I don't think it's time Berkeley County contested. So all this does is say, hey, it's going to be on the ballot. File from August 1st to August 15th if you want.
Okay, motion to adopt the resolution for Conservation District Supervisor. Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries. Anything else, sir? Is that it?
I think that's it.
All righty. Mr. Wine, we have a court expansion final budget.
Yes, sir. So as the commission is aware, July, or excuse me, January 1 of 2025, you have a new circuit judge. We started this process several months ago. We've worked with the Supreme Court locally, meaning the judge and his staff, and judge and her staff, and another judge and her staff. And then we worked with the Supreme Court's Space Analysis Division that says, you know, the Administrative Office Review Committee that kind of says, kind of tells you what you have to do and how you have to do it. We took the plans from Crabtree Rowball that everyone blessed. We submitted them to both Breckbone and Helman and Waynesboro, as you well know, you have open construction contracts with them with everything you have going on. And we got back pricing from very, very, very close pricing, like the difference between a couple thousand dollars and what ended up being a million dollar budget. I met with you four months ago and we set a budget of $500,000. We went back, turned Josh loose from Crabtree on them and I met with them also. The, the new final budget, the low, the low proposed number from Waynesboro Construction is $808,534. That's $308,000 above your original budget that was the estimate in the beginning. Construction is up. That excludes mechanical, which we'll pull out and run it through an RFP and do it ourselves. I think we can shave some money there. The, long story short is, last week, I asked you to approve the unencumbered fund balance and the moving of those monies in particular places. And you put $3 million in account 988, which is your construction budget. Of that 3 million, a million was for this project. So you have set funds aside to finish it. It's an unfunded mandate. You don't have an option. I think your only option is to select the most cost-effective piece of this and move forward. Josh and the team at Crabtree Rowball are satisfied that, that Waynesboro can in fact do it. And we're blessed, both Breckbone and Helman and Waynesboro, on the project you have open, both are at or under budget, not because of change orders they ran over, but things that got added to it. And both have been great to work with. So from the person, and Vice President Goguenard has been with me every step of the way, I, we could recommend either one of these, and I don't think either one of us would have any heartburn whatsoever. The most cost-effective solution, again, and what we're asking if the commission sees fit, is that we, you award this as a change order to Waynesboro Construction and we get started as soon as possible, knowing that that space needs to be ready for furniture installation in late December because a judge is going to sit in it January 2nd.
Okay.
That's the company store in the day report.
That is, this is the company store in the day report center.
Yeah. All righty, do I have a motion to approve the court expansion final budget proposal?
An award to Waynesboro.
An award to Waynesboro Construction.
In the amount of $808,534.
Not to exceed, by the way.
Not to exceed. Okay. Have a motion?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
All righty.
Gary, the other, the other $2 million that we put over in that account will cover everything on this project.
That is correct. And if you recall, the only reason that wasn't leftover money, that money was assigned and assumed in the last budget cycle, we just haven't spent it yet. It's already committed. Yes, sir, it will cover both. The, the next item, Mr. President, as you well know, the county commission, a few months ago, made a motion from the bench to go out and try and find borrowed money and funding to complete Phase 1 of the Inwood Park project. We advertised and you had some really nice responses, both bonding and conventional funding mechanisms. One of the things that, that was in your request for proposal was you wanted to see what it looked like to be able to have a payoff in five years if you so chose. So bonds, as you well know, are always the most cost-effective solution. Even though that money's expensive to get to, there's some legal fees and things like that, in the end, it's typically the most cost-effective. And that plays true here. You had, you had both Cardi Company out of Charleston and then Cruz Associates out of Morgantown propose very similar solutions. Cam Seagrist from Bowls Rice reviewed them for us. I reviewed them and it went across a couple of other desks. And it looks as if, and what we're recommending, if the commission sees fit, is to use Cardi and Company to initiate the process. We have 90% construction plans, you've all seen them, you've got the game plan, if you will, and the next agenda hiding will be a change order. We'll discuss that in a minute. But if the commission sees fit, we can initiate the process with Cardi and Company. It will ultimately be your decision when it comes time to dip the market and to see what the rates are. But they're at 3.922 back at the beginning of July when these came in. The market's even down further. I think they were at 3.75 just a few days ago. So hopefully, once the plan of execution is ready and we make it, they'll be even lower or add that. Which is, which is a good rate for today's market. The, it's for $3 million. That, the, kind of cart in front of the horse, but the next item we talk about will be the design of the phases. So Phase 1, for that amount of money, will get you your park, your entrance to the park, the first parking lot and the trail clear around the park, as well as stormwater management, plus all of the other hoops and hurdles we have to jump through to get to that. The $3 million, if the commission chooses to move forward, will in turn be applied to the $2.2 million that you know you're getting from federal grants. So Phase 2 would be that piece. So in the next 24 months, you could very well have Phase 1 and 2 done and have a very active park in South Berkeley.
Very good. All righty, motion to approve, I guess, the, the award, the Cardi and Company proposal?
For $3 million.
For $3 million. Do I have a motion?
Yes, sir, I'll motion.
Okay, have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Ms. Wine, just, just so that we have a clear understanding of this. The monies that we had originally appropriated, I think a million dollars is what the commission put forward, nearly $400,000 or so has been, been used so far with the engineering. So, leaves us a balance of about $600,000 in that ballpark. Those are the monies that we can carry the debt service for approximately two years.
That's correct.
I would hope. With that, to be able to pay this off within, I think you said originally that it had a five-year call on it.
It is an optional five-year call, that's correct.
That maybe we would be able to use the impact fee coming up in the future, once this is all established, and/or possibly TIF funds to be able to pay for this park. Is that correct?
You, you can. So, as you well know, we're in the midst of revising your comprehensive plan, and that will identify things that your, your impact fees could be applied to. So, that is an option, as well as, and I've had discussions with counsel for purposes of using TIF funds to, towards the debt service, and that is absolutely an option. So, for purpose of budgeting and the need for your cash right now, the million dollars that was applied for the project that came out of your rainy, or not your rainy day fund, but your quality of life fund can be used, and then you could look at identifying one of those two pools of money to satisfy the debt service. And all along, you said it's a 20-year bond, but you wanted a call at 5. So, to pay it off early has been the vision all along, and you will have those three options.
Yeah, and this will allow us to basically jumpstart this project.
We will.
It, it's a slow project for me already, I'm not the most patient person, but I know that the community is very excited about this, and being able to get, get this accomplished through the bond service will be tremendous. And then having eyeballed already those opportunities to make that debt service and pay that off in the very near future. Very good.
Okay. Call for the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries. Next up, CEC change order for Inwood.
Yes, sir. So, I alluded to this in the last conversation, and when the County Commission went to the street for requests for qualifications for engineering services for your park, it was asked for a, a solution and a 100% build plan for a park. As this evolved, I believe you've all seen, the initial budget numbers were about 15 million. You started to back those down casually, I know Steve and Eddie have both been heavily involved. What we've, what we've come to, this has come to believe is a four-build solution, so it'll be four phases to the park. In that, you're actually asking the engineering services to take that master build plan that's currently at 90%, re-engineer it, and give you four sets of build plans with four sets of site management, four sets of process management, and so on and so forth, as well as, because you have the $1.2 million worth of congressional spending money, which is HUD money, with your $1.2 million match, that necessitates a whole nother litany of testing NPDS, all kinds of things. So, CEC came back with a $150,000 scenario with an optional, another $50,000 to $200,000 if they have to do the, I did, I asked for my review, pardon me, some of the other studies that are required. So, at a bare minimum, it's going to be $149,000 additional change order with a potential another $50,000 to get it done. So, change order number one to them, if you want to move forward with the park with four phases, is just that, a, a change order that is $200,000. That'll get you four build plans, four construction management, interfacing with Region 9, doing all the new studies relative and necessary, and all of them included.
Make sure certain bats are not on the property.
Bugs, bats, burial grounds, all of that stuff. It's, it's no joke, and it's not in our wheelhouse to be able to manage it ourselves. You absolutely positively need a professional engineering company to do that for us. It's expensive, it's not cheap, but in my opinion, it's the only solution. And what I would ask is, is the commission make that a not-to-exceed and allow me to negotiate as best we could to move forward. But it's something that, if you're going to spend, you know, 3, 4, 5.2 million dollars in the next 36 months down there, you're going to want to make sure it was all done right. And honestly, if you make mistakes, you won't have access to that $1.2 million of grant money. You have to do it. It's no different than the Health Department and the HUD money that's coming through over there, with the hoops that we've jumped through, but it's a necessity. You don't have any options.
All righty. Do I have a motion to approve the change order for CEC in the amount of, help us looking for, or do we, not to exceed?
$199,000. It's $200,000.
$200,000. Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries. And we're going to take a little break until bid opening? Or do we want to go and pass that, Mr. Plager?
That's probably it, sir. Bid opening is your last item.
No, no need for executive session?
Have a need.
I believe there, Mr. Boyd, yes, real estate.
Oh, okay.
We can do it now, I don't think it'll take long, 10 minutes, do you, HD?
Oh, yes.
If we do, we'll come out, okay? Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Real estate.
Well, real estate matters.
So moved.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, we're in executive session. Like, sign opposed, we're in executive session. We're out of executive session, no action to be taken. We have a bid opening for RFP for the, I'm sorry, Dave Report Center for Office Furniture.
You do, Mr. President. This has been duly advertised in the paper, you have that certification on our website, delivered to all vendors of known interest. You have two responses, this is for the furniture for the addition at the Day Report Center. We, we worked hard, and kudos to Tracy and McCormick, as usual, to try and get the specs down so it matches, and it kind of flows with the current design of the old center, so, looking forward to what the numbers are.
Uh, see, this bid is from Global Industrial out of Port Washington, New York. Total bid, if this is the right page, I believe it is, $82,578. Hey, this is, bid is from Office Furniture Exchange LLC, going DBA as Labor's Office Furniture. Yeah, Hagerstown, Maryland. The total bid is $110,586.29. That it?
That's it.
Okay. That concludes the bid opening. Do we need to go back into executive session, or are you good, Anthony? Okay. Anything else to bring to the good of the order? Any items from the public? No public present. Mr. Bernhardt?
Well, it has been a very informative and wonderful meeting, but I move to recess.
We are in recess, thank you.